We're going, we're going. You go ahead.
All right. Good evening, folks, friends and neighbors, community, and all of you folks there on the Zoomer. It's seven o'clock on the twenty-first? The twentieth or twenty-first? What is this?
Twenty-first.
Okay, it's the evening of the big conjunction in the Western Sky. And this is a regular meeting of the State and City Council. And I'm Hank Porter, the mayor. And we have most of our council here, Councilor Ort is not, but she will join us, I hope, soon. Uh, what's here for staff? What have we got? Alyssa?
Yeah, um, so I'm here. And, uh, we've got a city manager, Keith Campbell is here. Chief David Friesendahl, uh, library director, Jana Moser, Lance Ludwig, Public Works Director, Dan Fleischman is on, our Planning and Development Director, and Susanna Sabracha, our Finance Director, is also on tonight.
Okay, well, thank you. All right. Uh, we have any public comment to?
No.
I mean, I'm just following the schedule here.
Yeah, no, we did not receive any requests for public comment this evening.
Okay, so then, thank you. And then the next thing would be, um, a consent agenda from, we didn't have a meeting on the seventh. So November sixteenth, City Council minutes. Uh, acceptance of abstract, excuse me, abstract election results from November third. And a resolution, an added item, a resolution ten thirteen. The cable company, that's wave broadband, I think, indirect control is changing. So that's on our, excuse me, consent agenda for this evening. What would you folks like to do with that?
Mayor, this is Councilor David Paddy. I motion that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, thank you, David. Is there a second, please?
Seconded.
Okay, thank you, Ben. We got a motion and a second to accept the consent agenda as presented. And so, Alyssa, would you poll the council on this?
Sure. Counselor Mullen?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Patty?
Yes.
Counselor Hook?
I'm gonna abstain because I was not at that meeting.
Okay. And Counselor Ort just joined us. So I will go ahead and ask her also.
Okay, wel- welcome and say yes.
Yes.
Did you want to ask her if this, this, Jordan, we're voting on the consent agenda. And, uh, we'd, we'd hope you'd take part, welcome anyway.
Yes, I, thank you. I, I came in right when I heard Alyssa say that, so yes.
Four, four, oh, one.
All right, motion passes four to zero with Counselor Hook abstaining.
Okay, all right. Well, under general, let's see, there's no, there's no public hearings tonight. So under general businesses, we thrash along here. Uh, the twenty-twenty State of the Streets and Local Motor Vehicle Fuels Taxation Report. Why, Mr. Ludwig, Lance?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, members of the council. It's nice to see you all tonight. I wanted to start off by saying, Chris, that's, that's quite an album collection you have behind you there. You must have been in the service or something.
Uh, thank you, yes. And anytime you want to come over and listen to some Pink Floyd, let me know.
All right.
Kinda weird, but anyway.
Anyway, any, uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Uh, as we do every couple of years, we like to, uh, come to the City Council and present the State of the Streets, uh, report. This was supposed to take place back on the seventh, but, uh, we're gonna try to put it in here tonight and, and, uh, go through this presentation and answer any questions that you may have. And with that, uh, we have the twenty-twenty State of the Streets Local Motor Vehicles Taxation Report, um, for you. And let me go down here. Let me, uh, go through here and see if I can get this thing to work. Oh, that's not it. Sorry, I'm trying to page down here and, uh, it's not working for me. Bear with me. I'm gonna go put a different presentation on. Hopefully this'll work for me. All right, let me get rid of this. Boom. All right.
Hey, Lance?
Hey, yes.
Um, just so you know, we can only see your file list. So if you click, if you go back to your share screen and, um, reset it, it should, um, pull up for you.
All right, let me try that again. Can you see my, those files now?
We're, we're just seeing your, uh, USB drive list of files.
Yeah, I've got, uh, can you see that? Never mind. Let me, you're obviously not seeing it.
No.
All right. I guess we should have tried this before.
We see it now.
All right, but, okay, let's see if I can get this to work now. Page down.
At, at the bottom, if you hit the start presentation, that might be, or up at the top where it says slideshow.
Where am I? There we go, slideshow, boom.
There you go.
Thank you, Alyssa.
You're welcome.
All right, so getting back to this, um, this is page one. We're gonna move down. Hopefully. Oh my God. Well, I guess that worked. Oh, there it goes. I guess I'll just use my cursor. Okay, well, this is the, these are the city main streets, uh, city maintained streets, as you can see. Everything in red, uh, within the city of state, you know, the streets that we maintain. We have thirty-four point one miles of city maintained streets. Each and four hundred and eighty-seven segments of that thirty-four point one miles. Each segment is typically one block in length, but sometimes blocks are split because you may have an improved side of the street on one side and not improved on the other side. So we have that more than one segments on that, so we can actually describe that when we rate them. Each, every couple of years, each segment is reviewed by two independent, uh, staff members. Uh, we had a, uh, assessment completed in two thousand seventeen, and we repeated that this spring in two thousand twenty. We use the Pacer Rating System developed by the University of Wisconsin. That was brought on board in two thousand fourteen, I believe, two thousand fifteen. We're still using it today. And, uh, the pavement inspection involved requires a visual inspection, ranking, uh, the roads or the segments on a scale from one to ten. We also review, when we go out and we review the streets, we review the sidewalks, the curbs, uh, and any other infrastructure in the street segment, and, uh, we take surveys of those and we, uh, monitor those. Of the forty-three miles, we have thirty-three point one-two miles are paved, point nine-five miles are unpaved streets in the city. And you can see those here in blue are the paved, unpaved are the red. That's fairly decent. We've got, most of our streets are paved these days. We've got a mile that there isn't. A lot of it's up in there. Some of it's up in Old Town. Uh, again, ninety-seven percent is paved, three percent unpaved. Unimproved streets, we classify those as paving but no curbs or not paved for the full width between the curbs. I'm sure you guys have been out there where you see, you're driving down a road, you're walking down a road, you see curbs off to the side, and then between the curb and the actual asphalt pavement, there might be gravel or dirt or that would be an unimproved street, uh, as far as our definition is. Partially improved, only one side of the road has a curb. Or fully improved, curbs on both sides. That's what we typically consider a, uh, a fully improved road. And you can see here, eighty percent of our streets are fully improved, which is a lot higher than I really would have thought. Nine percent is partially improved, and not improved, eleven percent. So we got three point eight-seven miles, eleven percent unimproved. You can see the streets here that are unimproved. Unimproved paving, no curbs, are not paved to the full width. Three point one-four miles are partially improved. You can see where those are located in blue. And twenty-seven miles are fully improved, eighty percent of our roads. Now, when I say fully improved, that doesn't mean they're in good shape. They're just fully improved as in curbs on both sides, pavement to both sides of the, up to the curbs on both sides. Now, the pavement could be in bad shape, but it's still paved. This is from our recent transportation, uh, system plan update, our master plan that we had done in two thousand nine that was adopted. This is how we classify our streets here. You can see that we've got minor, uh, minor arterials in town. That would be Shaft Road, Washington, Golf Club Road, and we've got collectors, Wilco, West Locust, East Saniam, Tenth Avenue, and Ida Street. Those are collectors. Kendall Way is also a collector's street. Neighborhood collectors, little less traffic on those. Uh, and you can see Virginia Street, um, is a collector, neighborhood collector. And, uh, well, you can see the rest of them. And anything in gray is just a local residential road. Minor arterial, again, that'd be like Washington Street. A collector would be like Gardner Avenue, Locust, Ida. And local would be like Don Drive or East, East Burnett. And here is an illustration or a graph of what we have. Minor arterial, we have about two point four miles. Major collector or collector, we've had about four point one miles. Commercial local, we have about three hundred, uh, sorry, three point four miles. Neighborhood collector, four point seven. Residential local roads, fourteen miles, and dead ends with cul-de-sacs, about five point five miles. Then you can see the percentages on top there. So again, local roads are, is the majority of the roads we have in our community. Uh, assessment completed in two thousand seventeen, repeated in twenty. This is a duplicate. Used the Pacer Rating Scale. Rankings from one to ten. And we reviewed street improvements, curb sidewalks. So on the Pacer Rating Scale, typically, um, from nine to ten is an excellent street where no maintenance is required. Seven to eight is a cracked ceiling, minor patch. And sometimes some slurry seal. That's what we look for, is slurry seal. Um, anywhere from a three point one to a six point nine is a structural renewal, which is an overlay, which is what we did. Yeah, on Marion Street, Virginia Street, and the Industrial Way, uh, streets this last year, as well as Regis Street, uh, last year. And then failure, failed to pour, one to three. Those are basically streets that need to be reconstructed. It's not always that they need to be reconstructed. Sometimes it really depends on the core samples that we take. I generally have a geotechnical engineer go out to these streets that we're looking at paving and perform core samples, which means they take a, like a drill bit, and they cut out a core that's like eight inches in diameter that goes down to twelve to fourteen inches, so they could pull that out and see what's in the road, what kind of rock, pavement, that kind of thing. And from that, we can determine whether or not, um, a structural renewal or a reconstruction that needs to take place on that road. This is the actual Pacer Rating, uh, system right here. Excellent for new construction. Nine is excellent, like a recent overlay. And you can see these going through here. Very good for an A. First signs of aging is like a seven. Like, you can see there, it says, uh, seal coat or a slurry seal at five. And down here, two, you can tell alligator cracking. Um, alligator cracking is exactly what it looks, sounds like. It looks like the back of an alligator. And I'm sure you've seen that, walking down many of our roads, that you're looking, and that's complete failure of the road, the subsurface of the road. And that's, they call it alligator cracking. And this is a pretty handy little graph here. You can see what this is, so, the pavement age on this, this graph down below, the longer it gets, you can see on the left side, you've got, uh, ratings from two to ten. And you can see as the, the pavement ages, how it starts to drop in quality. And you can see it gets pretty steep around six, right? That's where the steepest slope is. So what that's telling you is that when the road starts be, become rating, uh, rated at a five or a six, you really need to get some sort of treatment on that road. Or in a real quick period of time, or a short period of time, you're gonna be down here in the twos, and you're gonna have to be doing a total reconstruct. So you wanna put, put your dollars up here at the top here in the first ten, ten years of the, of the road. And so you don't have to spend the dollars down here, because when you get down in this lower range, down by the twos and fours, it costs almost three times as much money as if you would have put money up here in the six through the nine period. And did slurry seals, things like that. And that's what this graph is really showing you. Uh, these are examples of ratings. You can see here, you've got Robidoux from Fort, we're looking at a two there. That's, uh, this year. Third Avenue, um, East Saniam to Elwood, you're looking at a five point five. And then you've got, like, Marion Street, East Burnett, East Virginia, you've got eight point five. So if you're out and about and you're walking down the street, you can go look at these areas and you can see how they're rated. We also, in Public Works, we put our full, all our street segments, the liv, the ratings of all our street segments of the city can be found at this web link. If you go to that, or you go onto Public Works homepage, um, there's a link there that you can go look at your own street or anywhere you want in the city, and then you see what they're rated at. Uh, it'll also show if it's got curbs, zero or two, meaning on, on the sides of their streets, whether it's a fully improved, a half improved, or not improved. And whether or not it's got sidewalks. So that's something you guys can use as a tool to go out and look at or refer other citizens to. It's also on our monthly, uh, operating report. I put that on there as well, so people can go look at that as well as the other kinds of things that we do in public work each month. So getting to our, our road base here in State, that's one of the, the, the nice things that we do have in State is that since we are really so close to the river, we've got these ancient floods that came down that river at some point. And we've got a lot of rock and cobble in our, in our community. And you can see that here. Once you get through the asphalt, you can see the cobble all built up in here. That helps our roads. And that, even though our roads look really bad, most of the time, they're, they're not rutting out. There's not real big holes or potholes in it. I mean, we have potholes, but if we didn't have that cobble, it would be so much worse. We'd have rutting throughout the town. So just our natural base that we have in State really helps us out. Even though the asphalt looks bad, it, you, you can drive on it. You know, it's hard surface, but, you know, it doesn't look the greatest. You can see here, with our twenty-twenty rating system, you can see down below, from one through four, we've got twenty-three percent of our roads were rated into that, that category or that, that area. Four point one to six point nine, which is an asphalt overlay. Thirty percent of our roads require that. Seven point oh to eight point oh is a really a, a, a cracked seal, um, and a, and a slurry seal. Fourteen percent of our existing roads, uh, are rated at that. And then eight to ten, no maintenance required at all, worth thirty percent, a little over thirty percent for that. So, you know, most of our work is down in the reconstruct or asphalt overlay. Got over fifty-three percent there of our roads need that, which is a fairly decent chunk of change to, uh, fix that. And you can see here, these are the streets that need to be reconstructed for our ratings. In red. These are the streets that need to be overlaid based on our ratings. These are the streets that need to be cracked sealed and slurry sealed. And for example, I want to go through the Pacer again real quick. A Pacer, a rating of ten, it's like Lambert Place. You can see, we just paved this this last summer, black. They, in the industry, we, we, uh, well, I won't go into that, but we say, go out and paint it black, means you're going down, you're paving it. And this is what a freshly paved road looks like. You can see the numbers here. They just performed compaction testing with the nuclear densometer to see if we meet compaction in the subgrade and the asphalt. There's no fines lost, no maintenance required. That's a ten right there. So a seven is like East Burnett. You can see the ravelling, the, the loss of the fines and the, the minor ravelling starting to occur. And you can see a big difference between that and this. So that's a, that's a seven. Good-looking street, works fine, but you can see it, it, it could really stand to use a slurry seal right there to help maintain that road and, uh, create longevity for that structure. Pacer two, this is what we're talking about, alligator cracking. See what I, it looks just like an alligator's back. And what this indicates is that, uh, below, the, the structure below it is failing. Meaning the rock below it. And so this, this could be a reconstruct, depending on when we do those core samples, what we have down below. It could be a reconstruct, or it could be, uh, just a mill and an overlay mill, meaning we grind all that off and we repave it. But it really, it really depends on what we'd come, we'd get back from our geotechnical engineer when they do the core sample. And here's a one, it's severely distressed. Uh, this is a complete overlay. There's nothing below it. So we'd be having to dig fifteen inches of, fifteen inches to eighteen inches of all that material out. We'd put new rock in and new asphalt, be a brand-new road. That's really what this requires, a brand-new road to get it up to, uh, standards. Our priorities, when we're going out and we're paving or reconstructing, this is from the State Municipal Code twelve oh four two fifty. Well, we decided that we wanted to put a priority on arterial streets, and this is in a ranking order. Then we go to collector streets. Local streets with full width, curb to curb. Sidewalks, bike paths, trails are next. ADA ramps, accessible facilities. Local streets with partial width improvements, and then finally gravel streets. We really don't put any money in the gravel streets. We put money, a little bit of money each year for having them graded and, and then treated, so they don't create dust problems and that kind of things. But other than that, we're up here between the ones and the threes. Figuring out what we can do with our, our dollars. Each time we do, uh, a local street or a collector's street, any kind of paving or reconstruction or anything like that, we tend to try to do all the sidewalks that need to be repaired. And we also replace all the ADA ramps when we do those. So five, four and five generally get taken care of when we do, uh, pave or reconstruct a road. That's just part of the project. Street funding levels have not kept pace with the needs historically, I will say. Um, in the last three, four years, we've made a significant investment in trying to get our roads back to where they need to be. The gas tax funding will assist in reducing the backlight, backlog of street repairs. Our current backlog is nine point one million dollars, which does not include sidewalks, curbs. The slurry and crack seal maintenance has brought many streets back to good or condition, good condition, which is a rating of eight or better. Uh, new strip, new streets are built to a higher standard and should last longer than most existing roadways, because when we build a new street like Lambert, we put twelve inches of rock in, and then we pave it with three to four inches of asphalt. Uh, and it's compacted before we do anything. The dirt below the rock is treated. And, uh, they're just gonna last longer. But we do have to, we need to maintain those. We can't just let them go for twenty years and not do anything with them. And nineteen, this is our street fund budget. Nineteen twenty, we, uh, we invested a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in striping, signs, pothole repair, crack seal, and grading and dust control for our gravel roads. In twenty twenty-one, which was this last summer, we invested three hundred thousand dollars to overlay the shoots of lament and road. And we invested an additional sixty thousand dollars for crack sealing and slurry sealing, Pioneer Meadows and Jefferson Place. Using the twenty twenty Pacer Rating Scale, uh, we did some, some cost evaluations. These are ten thousand foot elevation. We're looking down and throwing some ballpark numbers at these projects. We're looking at about four point seven million dollars to do all the street reconstruction as we sit here today, if we wanted to bring it, everything up to, uh, good condition today. About another four million for street overlays, and another three hundred and thirty-two thousand for crack and slurry seal. This is a total of nine point one million dollars to get, reach a good level. At the current rate of spending, it'd take twenty-five years to bring all the city streets up to good. And that's with an, an annual investment. An annual investment of four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars a year towards these projects, we could get our streets up to good condition by twenty forty. But that's assuming that we don't maintain the streets that we were doing, we've overlaid in the last couple of years, like Regis, and that's assuming that everything freezes. We do it once and we don't ever have to maintain them again. So these dollars are little, they are kind of, uh, they're just kind of illustrated of where we're at. But that's more than that. I mean, we have to continue to maintain. Every five years, you should be doing slurry se, seals on, on streets. So after twenty years, you should be putting floor, four, uh, slurry seals down on one road to maintain the health of it. So these numbers don't reflect the ongoing maintenance. They just reflect a one-time deal to get our roads to good conditions as of today. This just shows what we, uh, from seventeen eighteen, uh, local gas This just shows what we, from 1718, local gas tax generated $200,000 annually. From 1920, uh, this year generated $177,000. The reduction is due to the COVID. No one, you know, there's fewer people driving, fewer gas tax or smaller gas tax. 16 to 17 through 18, 19, state gas tax generated 500,000 on average. For the street enterprise fund and 462,000 to 571. That was the range, but on average it was 511,000. 2019, 2020, the state gas tax generated $536,000, which is a light, less than the previous year. The previous year was 571,000. And that is due to fewer people driving because of the COVID. City could invest $500,000 annual on local street maintenance and repair. We could get up to a good rating in 18.25 years. And if I had my PDFs on here, I could show you the street ratings, all of them. I've got all, there's like 10 sheets. It's not on here though, uh, it was on the PDF and the PDF wasn't working and I apologize for that. I can send that to each one of you tomorrow if you didn't already get it. Did you get it in your packet?
It's, yeah, it's in, yeah, and it's in the online agenda as well.
All right. So I can just email, reach out to me and I can email you the street ratings in a PDF form. I apologize, I was planning on doing, using the PDF for my presentation tonight, but I couldn't get it to work. But in the last six, seven pages of the PDF, it has the street ratings for the entire city, each, each segment. Again, you can get it online or email me and I'll send you that ratings. And with that, I'll take any questions that you have regarding the 2020 street review.
Oh Lance, one quick one. Complete lack of engineering knowledge about this, but, and it sounds picky. I'm going to say that even before I ask the question. It just seems like Washington should be more than a minor arterial. And that's just me, I don't, I don't know, just watching the traffic and trying to skip across Washington on the scooter, which is real exciting sometimes.
I bet it is.
I waited though. Anyway, that's just, that's just one, maybe just being cranky, but it just seems like it, it should have a higher rating than that. Anyway, other questions and thoughts? Good presentation, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Um, Lance, um, and this is just out of my curiosity. If, if we had, just a hypothetical, if we had a angel investor that donated all the money, that we could get us up to good on every street right now. Do we have an idea of what the, what the budget should be for our roads to just on, ongoing budget? If we, if we say, if we got all our roads up to good today somehow, what, what would the ongoing maintenance cost look like?
Well, I, you know, this is just theoretical and I would really have to sit down and, and look at that closer Ben. But what, what I would say, if we had $9.1 million to bring all our streets up as of today, up to standards. Then I still think we're probably looking at two or 300,000 at least a year, just for the slurry seals, crack seals. You know, some streets are going to weather more than others. Some street are going to get more traffic than others. That's why, um, you know, some of those streets are collectors versus arterials and they get truck loading. You know, really, it really depends on that, um, the weather, how much rain they have. You know, the other important thing with this whole, this whole system. And it's something that I probably will add into this presentation in the future is what's very important to this, all these emb, the street envelopes is the drainage. Okay, we didn't talk about drainage at all tonight. And it's very important, if you don't have storm drainage in your streets, the water's just going to sit there and it's going to migrate through the asphalt. It's going to freeze, it's going to thaw and it's going to break the asphalt up and then it just wears the street out sooner. So, you know, it's a very important function of the storm system is to help prevent your streets from eroding and disintegrating. So again, I, I wish I could be more specific for a number, but I think, you know, the 300,000, I really have to sit down, but 300,000 a year just on maintenance. Your slurry seals, your crack seals, things like that, ongoing, because you really want to see those done every five years. So if you start from year one and you start doing, um, you know, you got 34 miles and you start from year one and you try to get 20% of those roads slurry sealed of the 34.1. And then another, you know, and you start working every year, you're doing one-fifth of 34.1 miles. That's kind of what you're looking at.
Yeah. I'm just looking at if we're, if we're going to, you know, consider, you know, making a concerted effort to, you know, catch up basically, then we need to know, you know, what's our base cost and we need to stack on top of, you know, what other, you know, repairs need to be made.
Somebody else?
Yes, this is Council Patty, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, David.
Yeah Lance, so just, I, I don't know, I think this might be helpful for Ben and then maybe some folks in the audience listening. Prior to the implementation of the gas tax, do you remember the timetable for how long it would have taken to get all these roads up to?
I think I did a presentation when, uh, before the gas, it was like 147 years or something at the present rate. So when I, when I started in 2015, um, I went back and I looked at how much the city was investing in streets, maintenance and repair. I think on average it was like $70,000 a year, 80,000. There were years or there were period of two and three years that didn't put any money into street maintenance or repairs at all. And, and so the city council at that time, they stepped up, they, I mean, we've really, we went from $80,000 to where this year we spent $450,000 on streets. I mean, that's huge. Is it enough? Well, I don't know if it's enough or not, but it's a heck of a giant step. Keith and I were just talking about that last week. We were talking about how far we've come as a city and a public works and trying to get our infrastructure up to date. From when he started or when I started specifically and it is amazing. I mean, the city council and I should say the city sons, because they, they voted for the, the gas tax. They've stepped up. I mean, we went from 80,000 a year and that included crack seal, potholes, signs, everything. And now we're, we're investing $450,000 or more a year into our roads and that's huge. Is it going to be enough? You saw my presentation, it would take, if we stopped today and we paid for everything today, it'd take us $9.1 million. Okay, so at that $450,000, if we just did each one of those, it's, it's going to take 20 years. But then there's maintenance along the way. So I don't know if we catch up without, you know, huge, huge more, uh, investment goes higher. But we're doing our best and that's all we can do. I mean, we are not alone in this, this, uh, this feat either. I mean, just about every city you can think of is in the same situation and counties.
Okay, yeah, so I just was going to say, you know, with all that in mind, it might be helpful. And I'm not talking about this year, I'm talking about future years. Maybe to have some sort of forecast for what costs have been up to that point. And if they continued along that kind of trajectory, what it would look like in the coming years. But this has been really helpful information for me, so I really appreciate it. It was a great presentation Lance, I'm sorry your PDF wouldn't work, but I heard and that's great.
So I didn't understand that, what in future years, David, what, what would you like to see?
Sorry, I don't know if my audio is good today. Uh, I was just going to say that maybe some sort of forecasts with what the costs have been for maintenance and upkeep historically and factoring that in to see where the trajectory, where we would be with those costs. And those other investments that you've talked about, what that might look like in the future. And I'm not talking about this year, I'm talking about in future years, maybe, just a thought.
All right.
Thank you David, others?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Hey Lance, thank you for the presentation. Hi. So when you were, I mean, we've, we've talked about the roads before and so going back to the roads you were talking about that are, um, the 23% of our roads that are kind of in disarray. So I know we've had this conversation, but it hasn't really gone any further than like speculating. So when we talk about those roads, it's not just the roads that need to be fixed. It's the sidewalks, like you said, and we need to worry about storm drains. And then also all of the infrastructure underneath, so the sewer and the, um, the water lines, et cetera. When, okay, what's my question? So when can we have a question, a conversation about how to use our resources to fix those roads? Because it's just been kind of a round and round circle. Can we use our road fund to fix those roads and the infrastructure underneath or not? But we've never actually as the council had a conversation about that.
That is a, you know, that's a good point and I, I think it probably needs to be had. Specifically the storm drainage. I think that's something that I, I have my thoughts on it, uh, but I'm not the city attorney. And I think the questions that you bring up, uh, may want to be reviewed by a city attorney as well before we bring them to council. Cause I'd hate to, oh yeah, let's spend street dollars on, on storm drainage. I don't know the legalities, we can do that. But I think those questions need to be answered and I think, uh, the city manager and myself and the, the city attorney should probably look at that question and determine what the answer is to that question. And once that answer has been given to us, I think we need to bring it to the city council. Because I, I, I know, I know Jordan, I'm sorry councillor, that, um, we're all in agreement that if we could spend some of those three dollars on storm drainage, they would only help the situation because our storm enterprise fund is probably the weakest fund. It's right there with water. So, you know, I don't get much done in the storm. I, I think I get to spend like, uh, you know, I, I don't want to sound like I'm crying in my suit here, but I'm, I, we've got a lot of storm drop problems in our city and I can get to spend like $50,000 a year on trying to fix streets. And that is impossible to do. That's like two manholes, pollution control manholes. It's just, it's not going to happen just using the, the storm fund the way it is. I'm telling you, that will never happen. We just don't have money, uh, in the storm enterprise fund to, to fix anything. We're doing our best to hit problems, um, problem areas with the storm fund. But unless we come up with some other solution and that solution that you just brought up might be the one. I, I don't know, but we got to get those, those questions answered.
So, so let me.
It's above my pay grade, I'm sorry. I wish I could tell you, yeah, we're going tomorrow, we're going to start this, I, I can't.
Yeah. So Lance, let me, let me jump in. So I, I think just so everyone understands what the question is. I mean, one of the, the problems that we have with some roads, especially in the downtown area is it's not just the road itself that's the issue. The other issue is the infrastructure, um, that's going to be part of those roads. So the sewer system, the water system, sidewalks, uh, curbs and, and things of that nature. And so the legal question, and we have posed this and we have asked questions, um, to legal counsel is can we use other funds to, and basically state that we are doing a project and to have all of the funds assist in doing that project if the ultimate goal is to improve a road? And, um, so the really, the big question and, and even beyond counsel is can, does legal counsel justify that? Cause one of the problems that we have with funds can very much be, uh, they have to be used specifically for what they're designated for and we're not allowed to, to use them for something else. So, um, that really becomes part of the problem. The creative thinking that, that councillor Orta is talking about is if we have a road theoretically and we have, we need to upgrade the water lines, we need to upgrade the sewer lines. Could those, could we allocate more of the cost for that as part of the road construction to help, if you will, expand the road construction? Our, our attorney thought that was an interesting concept. I know some other cities have sort of looked at the same thing, but we are not, it isn't, there isn't something out there right now. There's a playbook that we can, we can do this. And so, um, city attorney has, has started looking at this and we have had conversations. The question really will be councillor or whether our attorney deems it as something we could legally do. And then to have the conversation with council if we want to do that. Where it stands right now and whether it's, it's legal or not, um, I, I'm not optimistic, but I don't think it's, it's necessarily a, a dead discussion. So I'll continue to, to talk to the city attorney and to try to get something in writing. Um, and then to have a conversation about what those options are. But what we've been trying to do and Lance has been talking about this is trying to figure out ways we can leverage other resources in order to advance with the street, the street projects. I think one of the things he mentioned in our conversations have always been the idea of let's start sawing wood, let's start making progress. Let's see if we can go momentum, let's see if we can have some breaks coming our way. You know, one of the big examples that we can give in success has been our partnership with Marion County. That really expanded our, our dollars, if you will. And so again, trying to look for creative ways to basically take the dollars we have and to, and to strengthen those and, and to, and to utilize those resources. So, um, I think councillor, that's a long-winded answer to your question, but it is something we're having active discussions with legal counsel on and trying to get opinions, um, beyond just that. And I think what, what our, our legal counsel is doing is, is even having discussions sort of above him to see what the, what the legality of all of that is. And to understand there may not be a perfect answer. But it's something we at least want to see if we can ask permission to do and try to accomplish.
What I will say is I, I brought this very question up in one of the seminars I attended, the American Public Works Association, uh, state conference. And I was talking to the public works director from the city of Benz and I asked them specifically that question. Are you doing storm improvement? Are you building storm improvements with street dollars when you're doing capital projects? And he looked at me and he gave me, you know, I could just see it in his eyes. He wanted to tell me what he really, he wanted to tell me what they really do. And he said, no, we can't do that. So I, I don't know if they do or they don't. I'm just telling you, they can't do it and they don't do it. So, so that's, uh, that's why we're working with our city attorney to figure out if it's a legal, it's a legal question to see if we can do it or not.
I just had a thought though, so there, I follow, okay. So there are the streets that don't have sufficient storm. Right? So those streets would in fact need, in order to rebuild them, they would need storm improvement. Which wouldn't come out of, what, which fund would that come out of?
Well, that is why it's so hard to find roads to build, um, to do these improvements, like a reconstruction. It's tough to go point to a street that I can go reconstruct when I need to put storm in the street. We don't have storm dollars to do it, so that street doesn't get reconstructed.
Isn't the street like the, like you can't, you can't not like, yeah.
That's exactly what it is. But again, if you're going to put curbs in the ground, one of the, the primary reason for a curb is to direct runoff to a storm system, so it doesn't flood people's front yards.
So can you not, you can't use street dollars to build a curb?
Yeah, but you gotta run this, you, you gotta direct, those are the direct storm water. That's what curbs for. Direct storm water one way and it, and it's taking it to a storm system. If there's no existing storm system there, there's nowhere to take it. And it's just going to run off into people's front yards and then we're going to get calls, hey, you really messed us over here. And, and then we're going to be dealing with that. That is, that is a big situation that happens. I spent many years dealing with that, but that's the kind of thing we're into. That's the kinds of things that we have to look at and we not only rate the streets and determine, uh, try to determine what streets to do, but what infrastructure needs to be taken care of and if we have the dollars to do it and that kind of thing. So it's, it's, uh, it's, it's, uh, you know, it's a pretty dynamic ballgame that we're playing to try to figure out how to spend these dollars.
Hey, hey, so Lance.
Fair enough.
Hey Lance, so maybe you could talk about like Fifth Street. I know we have that coming up as, as one of the priority streets, but one of the challenges we're having, for instance, on Fifth Street is, is the design.
one of the challenges we're having, for instance, on Fifth Street is, is the design work that needs to be done. Do you wanna just talk about what, you know, what? So when we're looking at, we understand that one of the things is that the, the, I refer to it as a reverse L around downtown, but the Old Town corridor is, is an area that needs, you know, needs improvement. And Fifth Street was identified as, as one of those streets, but there's additional challenges just beyond going and doing a pavement. So Lance, maybe you can provide, you know, what the challenges are in some of those other areas.
Fifth Street is rated, if you go look at your ratings, it's rated for a total reconstruct, okay? And I, and I think I mentioned earlier that when we start talking about pavement overlays for potential streets or reconstructs, I hire a geotechnical engineer to go do core samples for me. So assuming the core samples come back for Fifth Street um and they show that we don't have enough rock section underneath the road, that means we gotta dig that all up, right? And then we're gonna have to put a storm system in the grounds, a new water line, cause I think the water line is undersized as well. And you don't wanna put new pavement and build a new road uh and in five years you're cutting it all up to put a water line in. I mean, all these things like you were saying earlier, Jordan, they need to be coordinated and done at once if you're gonna put those kind of dollars to a project.
Yeah.
And so what we're doing for Fifth Street is I'll be going out after the new year for a uh, a bid to design Fifth Street. That will be the project will be a more than likely a reconstruct and it's gonna put all the improvements, you know, in Fifth Street that needs to happen. Sidewalks, storm drainage, if we can do it, we'll have to be creative. Um, water line and upsize any kind of sewer lines. And at the same time, well, hopefully we'll be working with property owners to have them, uh if they need their sewer laterals uh improved or fixed, that we do that as well through programs through DEQ. Um, and so that's kind of where we're headed with that. That probably is not gonna take place for probably a year and a half, two years, cause it's probably gonna take nine months to a year to design it. Um, and then we've gotta put that in the schedule to build, but that's kind of what we're looking at. Um, that's the kind of project for Fifth Street. Whereas other streets like Hollister, which we're looking at, it's a collector's street, um we're looking at just doing a, a plain mill and overlay on that, which is gonna save us dollars because it's all it is. There's no improvements that need to be done underground. There's no water line or sewer or storm. So we'll just take a mill out there, we'll mill down two or three inches and then we'll just pave it. Just like we did out at Industrial Way this year. And we got a lot of work done cause it was just a mill, a grind and an overlay with asphalt. We didn't have to do any improvements. And so we're gonna end up probably alternating those years doing that type of thing. Like one year we won't have the, the money to build a reconstructive road. It might be every third year we reconstruct a road and in between there we find roads that we can just mill and overlay. At a re, you know, at a decent, you know, two hundred thousand dollars a year. I know it sounds like a lot, it is. But if we can get work done, streets uh milled and overlaid for two hundred thousand and in three years we spend six hundred and fifty to seven hundred thousand to reconstruct the road, that's how we're gonna have to go forward. Uh, and with the dollars that we have, that's just the way it's, I believe it's pointing, to be quite honest.
Thank you.
Anyone else on, on this item? Other questions, thoughts? Okay, we can go on to the next item then.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you Lance. Yeah. Um, a council meeting location plan. Mr. Campbell.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Um, on September thirtieth, the city entered into an intergovernmental agreement with Marion County uh through FEMA uh pursuant to RS one nine oh oh one oh. Uh, the purpose of the agreement was to establish a multi-agency use for our state community center for the wildfires of Santiam Canyon. Uh, the lease allowed FEMA to u- utilize the community center for supportive individuals and businesses that were directly impacted uh by the wildfires. The initial lease that we had with FEMA was for three months with an option for six months. On November seventeenth, the city was notified by FEMA that the facility was no longer needed and that they have since left the facility. Um, they have recently paid their three months' worth of, of use, even though they're not actively using it. The city council had asked when this agreement was done to have a discussion on what, where we would go if we were able to do in-person meetings again. Um, at this point, the s- city can begin utilizing the community center for in-person meetings once it's allowed by OHA and the state of Oregon guidelines. This is gender item, cause we were asked to bring it back, so I'm bringing it back um with that explanation and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Keith, uh, one quick one. In light of recent developments, uh if uh the state has essentially closed down through March, can we, can we expect anything before then? I think I know the answer.
Uh, you know, I'm not gonna speculate that far out. Um, we do know that through December thirty first, we will be in um the highest risk category is defined by the state. Uh, we are watching those metrics. Um, the numbers were better for today, but there is a day of the week bias that occurs. Early in the week is normally the lowest numbers if you look at the, the data trends. Um, so we'll monitor that and we'll look and see what the impacts are as, as we're able to move. Um, I can say that what I've been told is that from where we're at right now isn't good enough for leveling off. They would wanna see a decline. Um, so we'll continue to monitor that, to that, but um right now it's looking like we may be in that, that high or extreme risk, the highest category for um the near future. So I, I do know there is some good news. Vaccinations have, have started. Um, I know they have their priorities out. I see the police chief over here nodding his head. The police department was notified of trying to get them into, to that. So there's hope o- on the way. Um, it's just a matter of how fast those, those vaccinations can happen and um how the testing and, and the results occur. But it would be at the earliest the first of the year before we could hope to, to do in person and, and probably a little later than, than that.
Okay, thank you. Other thoughts and questions? None? Okay. Well, that's uh, that's good information, Keith. Sort of. Um, I don't think I'm the only one that's hoping twenty twenty goes away as quick as it can. But that's another whole, another whole thing. Um, if not, if nothing else, let's go to fiscal year twenty twenty-one property tax update as of November thirtieth. Susanna?
Same thing as your mayor and council. Okay, this is just an informational item because the last time we talked at quarter one about um the budget and things like that, David asked if we could get an update um when the majority of the prop, this, the property taxes were happening. So we get the bulk of our taxes by the end of November, but we do get a little bit in December. So when I, this, this is what we've actually collected as of eleven thirty, okay? When you're looking at your um report that I gave you, the county assessed value, that two point two million is what the county says and if everyone paid a hundred percent of their property taxes for what they've assessed their property tax value to be, that's what we would collect. Historically, we never collect a hundred percent. We generally get ninety-seven to ninety-five percent depending on the year is normally what we would collect. When we did the budgets back at the beginning, right before COVID hit, we were anticipating a reduction, so we did our budget at one point eight million with basically doing our best educated guess and what the impact would happen. Um, the, the dollars that we've received to date is one point eight million, which gives us about ninety percent of what we've budgeted. But it's only eighty percent of the assessed value. That is a lot lower than we normally collect. We normally collect like I told you, the ninety-seven, ninety-five percent. December will be the final uh result because by the end of December, we've pretty much got everything that we were gonna collect. Little tiny amounts come in. Even if that came in around two hundred thousand, we would hit the budget that we projected, but we would still be in the ninety percent range instead of ninety-five or ninety-seven. So we're still gonna come in low. We just might come in close to what we budgeted. We, so far, we're still looking at taking that um actual value that we receive and decreasing it by another five percent for next year. So that's why we're continuing to move and looking at what we need to do to keep our expenditures low so we can move forward. In looking at property taxes, another important thing to remember is that the assessed value is, changes based on economic downturns. The assessed value at this point at the two point two isn't probably showing any effects of COVID. That could show up in next year's taxes and the following year, depending how long and how deep the downline is and if it pulls the price value of homes down. So that'll be important to remember as we're moving forward and putting in that, this, next year's budget and so forth going forward. So um, and then I just broke out the property tax, the levy amount at the bottom, which is almost neck and neck, cause most people are collecting at the same time. So that's where we are to date. There's your uh numbers. Does anybody have any questions?
Susanna, this is Council Patty.
Hi.
Good day.
Hey. Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so if I'm interpreting this correctly, as far as what's been budgeted, we've received ninety percent of the funds that have been budgeted and that's as of the end of last month, correct?
Correct, as of eleven thirty, correct.
Okay. Do we have some sort of contingency plan if we don't reach a hundred percent of the budget?
Well, we put, we kinda put the contingency plan into action right away. We've held back all capital projects, any repairs or things we were planning on doing in the city hall and police ring has been, we froze them all. So we've kinda like stopped everything and then we still have frozen all the vacant positions. And three of those were in the general fund. So that contingency is still holding. So even if we didn't get a hundred percent, we're still looking at having some elbow room to maintain basic services for next fiscal year, even if we are gonna go down lower.
Okay, so if I'm understanding that correctly, even though it's budgeted, it doesn't mean that we're actually spending that amount.
Correct, correct. Cause we're actively working on even more ways of reducing expenditures. Every month we're looking at trimming, trimming, trimming.
Okay, thank you so much, Susanna. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
So anyone else on that one? And, and thank you, Susanna, for the, the good, the good report. I don't know about the good numbers, but good report, thank you. We found out before the meeting, Susanna is a former track starter in the mega California high school, had eight thousand students in it. I'm embellishing this a little bit. Anyway.
Yep, I hold the record for I don't know how long. It could still be there, it's hard to say.
Uh, um, before we quit tonight, are there, are there any other things that anyone needs to bring to the council or just uh?
Oh, Mr. Mayor.
Staff, yeah.
I have a question for Susanna or for Keith.
Go ahead.
Um, do we know if the special session that was held today that was supposed to help with COVID relief, if any of that affects um our city and, or any relief dollars coming our way?
It's all yours, Keith.
Um, I haven't seen, uh, we've been following with the LOC. LOC's done a nice job. For anybody that wants to, they record their weekly phone calls that we as a staff listen to, so you can go listen to that. I, I, I guess I wanna give some kudos to the LOC for keeping up stuff to date. I haven't seen specifically what is going to be in that package that you're referring to that was, that was passed. Um, last we heard, there was some contention on whether there was money for state and local governments, so um, I haven't seen anything yet. It's, it's funny you were saying that. I was spending my afternoon trying to see if there was any news on, on what it was. So hopefully we'll have, we'll have some news on, um, you know, if there was funding in place for state or local governments. I know that there was money in there for businesses. I don't know if that's gonna allocate through the state or through even the federal government that we could access to assist some of our, our local businesses. So um, I think that's the area that it most likely will come through. I don't think it's gonna be similar like with the CARES Act money where we as a city, you know, have an allocation of money that we're, we're utilizing and, and spending. And when we talk about David, some of the lack of income um that we're receiving and, and um, you know, only being an eighty-one percent approximately of our, our property tax. CARES Act money that we did receive, I think is one of those things that's gonna be in assistance for this year. The problem is, of course, as we look forward to um next year, uh if there isn't more assistance, that, that, that's gonna be a challenge. So that's, that's helping fill a, a, a hole right now, if you will. Um, so we're trying to prepare for what happens if it's not. So I hope we have more information. I, I, I checked my email before the meeting to see if we had any update from the LOC. Um, and I, I'm looking forward to kinda hearing what it may be. So um I, there was so much moving parts and so many different plans. I'm not sure exactly what got passed, but I know there's, you know, some allocation for individuals and so uh at this point we'll say anything that comes will hopefully help.
Thanks Keith. That uh negotiating was going on clear up into the news hour this evening. And uh there were reports coming in as, as well as uh uh our wonderful protest group beating on the glass doors of the Capitol, people standing around watching that. Mm-hmm. But anyway, uh, other thoughts? Questions, concerns? Anything? Should we call it a night? I hope all of you have the most pleasant Christmas possible. Uh, be well, be safe. Take care of each other. And we'll see all of you next year. Good night.
Good night.